Call the order, the regular meeting of the State's County Commissioners March 8th, 6 o'clock. As always, we'll start off with invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Menon Hall if he'd lead us, please.
Almighty gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this beautiful day. Lord, we thank you for all the many things that you are able to let us work through each and every day. Father, thank you for the people that have come out to our meeting tonight. We ask that they have a safe journey home. And Father, for all the ones that are watching in, we also ask our prayers and to be with them. And Father, for this evening now, we ask that you go well, this God lead and direct us. All of these things we ask in our precious name. Amen.
Amen. Please continue standing for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now move on to the approval of the agenda.
Nation to a prayer.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now move on to our comments from our Commissioner and Manager, starting with Commissioner Morris.
Just like to welcome everybody here that's joined us tonight, both online and in the room. And I don't have any other announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, sir. Commissioner Barnicastle.
As like Mr. Morris says, great to see everybody here and everybody watching. We've had to finally had a break in the weather, another beautiful day, and hopefully it'll stay that way for a while.
Alright, thank you, sir. Commissioner Menon Hall.
Thank you, and I also want to welcome everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate you so much. And for everybody that's watching in, live streaming, thank you for being a part of our meeting tonight. And just want to say, the Lord has blessed us. It was a beautiful day today. What a beautiful day. So, I have Mr. Chairman.
Sir, Commissioner Cox.
Just thank everyone for being here and participating in local government. It's good to see everybody. And we just wish everybody at home that can't be here that good health and get out and enjoy this sunshine and get some vitamin D. It helps fight COVID-19. And it's one of nature's hillers, so we just appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank each and everywhere else for being here. It's good to see some people from Town of Walnut Cove also. It's good to have you guys. And like I said, I'll make it to one of your meetings one of these days. So with that, I'll pass it on to our County Manager, Mr. Oakley.
I'd like to say welcome to everyone. I hope everyone is doing well and continues to do well. And with that, I have nothing else.
Alright, thank you, sir. Want to move on to our public comments. Well, this one, I'll call your name if you would, just state your name, your address. You have three minutes to talk. Shannon has a timer. Whenever you hear a timer go off, please wrap it up very quickly. Alright, and we'll start off with Savarsky.
Hi, my name is Sriyananda Sarva. Sri, I live in Walnut Cove at 1060 Tyler Road. And I've made presentations here to the Commissioners for about five years now, a little over five years. And some of the Commissioners are not aware, new Commissioners, not aware of all the presentations that I've made. So I just wanted to give you a link to those presentations, so you could look at them and read them and take advantage of them. I offered lots of solutions to the problems facing the county, and I think it'd be fun to take a look at those solutions. So that link is rebuildhealth.com, which is my website. Like to rebuild your health, it's just rebuildhealth.com/presentations. So it makes it easy. So anyone that wants to look at the presentations, either here or at home, you can look at all those presentations that I've made. About fifty, fifty pages of presentations. Lots of information about things that we could do in Stokes County to make the county better. Happier, healthier, and greer was the way I phrased it back then, and I think it's still appropriate. So take a look at those presentations, enjoy them. If you have any questions, you can contact me through my website. And on every presentation, at the top of the presentation is my contact information. So there you go. Have a look, and I hope you enjoy them. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
I wish I could stay, but I have to run off.
Could you call out the website one more time?
It's rebuildhealth.com.
Rebuildhealth.com.
Yeah, R-E-B-U-I-L-D, rebuild, H-E-A-L-T-H.
Okay.
Slash, oh, dot com slash presentations with an S on the end.
Got it.
Alright, great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kim Greenwood.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and Commissioners, it's good to see y'all this evening. I'm here on behalf of the Town of Walnut Cove tonight. Mayor Brown is with me. And we were just wanting to stop by, more or less, just to thank y'all for a tremendous job that all of you do for us. We, Mayor Brown and I were discussing last week some of our blessings of the town. We are physically in good shape. Things are coming to town as we grow. And she is one that always encourages me to thank those folks that do so much for us. And so many times in government, as you know, we like to point out the things that don't go our way, but we are negligent sometimes in thanking the folks that do so much for us. When Sheriff Marshall retired, and Sheriff Lemons, you know, we depend on Stokes County Sheriff's Office. We contract with them for our law enforcement. We contract Charles' Fire Marshal's Office for the county. Brandon does such a tremendous job for us with EMS, with our disasters. Of course, Shannon and Jake, I call on them so often, so much with administrative questions. I know Brother Will Carter is here. I asked him for his advice and help so many times. As Walnut Cove grows, it's a lot of these things that takes more than one, and he's used his contacts. So we just want to stop and thank y'all for being good neighbors, good friends. I think this is the way government is designed and supposed to work with good friends, and that's the way it's supposed to be. So we're just so proud of our association and on behalf of Mayor Brown and the Commissioners in Walnut Cove. I hope you know you have a friend in Walnut Cove, and we look forward to many more years of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for what you guys do as well. Alright, Mr. Andy Stevens.
Good evening. I have my usual one-page note, which we know runs a tad over three minutes usually, so. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, and visitors. My name is Andy Stevens, and I reside at 157 Old Carner Drive outside King. I'm here tonight to speak up for the constitutional rights of Stokes County government employees. And as this pertains to gun rights officially stating the views of grassroots North Carolina and gun owners of America, both no-compromised gun rights organizations and where I hold leadership roles in both. I wish to address the perceived hesitation of this board to acknowledge that just over thirteen months ago, Stokes County Commissioners, with the largest crowd in recent memory and by unanimous resolution, declared our county to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Several of you sitting Commissioners voted that night to make it so. Yet since that time, we see the resolve to put words into action appear to be lacking. The Town of Danbury, for example, the very seat of Stokes County, has established itself as a gunfire-free zone. And Walnut Cove seems poised to move in this very direction tomorrow night. Heck, just a few months ago, right here from the dais of the Commissioners' bench, we heard rumblings of enacting a countywide firearms discharge ordinance. Thankfully, that effort finally quietly was kicked to the curb. Tonight, this board has scheduled yet another round of discussion and a potential limitation of one's Second Amendment right to bear arms, making a group of citizens and residents potentially defenseless second-class serfs. Enough already. Kick this one to the curb, too. Are we not a Second Amendment sanctuary county? Should you need some reassuring facts to comfort you in rendering it a correct decision, take succor in these. Statistically, concealed carry permit holders as a group are more law-abiding than law enforcement personnel. From a safety standpoint about accidents, while having to holster, unholster, or leave a firearm unattended, whether in a vehicle, a desk drawer, or a purse, increases the risk of an accidental discharge or theft. The safest, most secure location for one's firearm is on one's person all the time. Magic signs placed on doors or words on paper do not prevent malcontents, miscreants, social pests from carrying out their diabolical deeds on the innocent and unsuspecting. Safety in such places is a hopeless myth. The beauty of unrestricted lawful concealed carry is the uncertainty its certainty provides. This guaranteed uncertainty/certainty translates to safety for us all. The flock is protected by invisible sheepdogs who blend in without notice by those who might do harm to others in the group. Finally, millions of North Carolinians lawfully possess firearms, and the number of citizens possessing valid concealed carry permits in our state now approaches 800,000. Nationally, over eight million citizens bought their first firearm in this last year, too. Look around in any public gathering, and you can expect no less than one in eight to be discreetly armed. Stokes County, as both our former and current sheriffs can tell you, has more than its fair share of gun owners and concealed carry permit holders. We are a well-armed, freedom-loving bunch. I'll be in Raleigh tomorrow morning encouraging our state legislature to move forward with legislation already advancing gun rights for all. One Senate bill to protect worshippers in their churches has already passed the Senate and moved to the House for consideration and action. Additionally, I expect the filing of a concealed carry constitutional amendment to the North Carolina State Constitution to take place soon. In North Carolina, we are advancing gun rights, not further restricting or taking them away. So tonight, please put an end to this matter, move it to the action agenda, and unanimously affirm Stokes County employees are not second-class defenseless citizens while in the employ of Stokes County government. Thank you.
Mr. Stephen James.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephen James. I live at 102 Kellystone Drive, apartment number 22 in King. Some of you don't know me real well. Rick does, Sonya does. You don't know what kind of fights I'll put up, but I can promise you it's gonna be a big one. What happened Saturday at the county committee, at the Stokes County GOP Commission?
Does this have anything to do with county business? Not party-related, but just county business?
I believe it does, since two of you are up there.
It's, this is for county business only, not political stuff.
He's not restricted in what he can talk about.
But we're starting to get away from county business and going into...
It doesn't matter.
We're here to conduct county business.
Bernie Dewey, tell people what to say in their public comments. What?
Public comments.
I'm not restricting our silence, but there's an executive board meeting for stuff like this. This don't have to pertain to county.
Well, if I understand the statute, you need to make any kind of public comment, you won't. Unless it's inappropriate, like we should decide.
How's the board wish proceed with it?
All the statute.
It just, it asked the board.
I answered your question, answered your question. All the statutes.
I don't think it's gonna have anything pertaining to county business, but I'm fine with listening to what he has to say, and then I'm sure we'll listen to it again down the road somewhere else.
Alright. Commissioner Menon Hall.
I mean, nothing that we can do anything about, but whatever.
But what to count, I'm gonna go with what rests the board.
Commissioner Barnicastle.
Well, this is my feeling as a Commissioner. I feel like it's my obligation to listen to what you've got to say, so.
Thank you.
Alright. Shane, would you mind restoring his three minutes?
During the election cycle this past year, I was at Poplar Springs pretty much for long hours every day helping those that were running. I got a thank you from Sonya. I got a thank you from Wayne Barnicastle. And I spent a lot of hours out there. What I saw on Saturday was absolutely a travesty in this county. When a floor is open to nominations, it should be open to nominations completely. There was one nomination made by Mr. Ronnie Mendenhall that was seconded by Andy Nicholson, and a vote was taken. That is not the way that meetings are supposed to be run, and if you two guys don't know that, maybe you don't need to have the positions that you have.
Alright.
Now, I can promise you that come the next election, I'll do everything I can to see that you, Ronnie Mendenhall, and you, Andy, are off this board.
We will move on with our meeting now with the approval/conson agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
In discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's no items on the information agenda. We now move on to our discussion agenda. Item A, personal policy updates from our HR Director Gil Tucker and HR Assistant Jamie Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think Shannon had sent each one of you the, what we had to get clarified.
Well, it's on the agenda, under the summary. There's a, there's a list of things that were discussed at the last meeting and things that we needed further clarity on, and things that were discussed with County Attorney Browder. And as long as the board is okay with the social media section now, that entire piece was taken out. That was in the draft policy and was replaced with the policy that was approved in 2014, which had previously been part of the IT policy they have to sign separately. So now that's gonna all be included in the handbook, the entire technology policy plus the social media. And it pretty much works so that it says, any type of social media site in the future pretty much encompasses anything that might be to come, even if not here yet. And Ty was good with the wording on that, because I think it was approved by him in 2014. So unless anybody has a further issue with that one, I think that problem's been resolved. And then they added the remote working policy. The political activity clarification part we discussed, we didn't make any changes to that, because we talked about it in the meeting, but we didn't really decide if it needed to be changed or not. So if anybody has any suggestions on that one. And then the disclosure and protection of confidential information was defined as non-public. That was updated.
That was updated.
And then the workplace searches was updated to include the employee having to consent and also law enforcement doing only searches if needed, and if consented by the employee. And the other thing was the concealed carry. I sent all of you and obtained a copy of the Rockingham County's Policy of Workplace Violence, and the very last page of it have what they do for concealed carry. They are a county that allows it in their county for employees in public, except for restricted buildings, like the courthouse and things like that. I did check with our former sheriff and our current sheriff. Our current sheriff is pretty busy with all the new responsibilities, and he's been trying to get some answers from... He's just trying to see about, because we are on one campus, our courthouse is located right here in our complex, just to make sure there's not any issues there. But we did pull the general statute, and I know Ty's probably looked at that, too, as far as what we're allowed. There's some uniform guidance from the state on that. It's pretty much your decision on posting it. If you wanted to post it, we'd of course have to keep the courthouse as a building you can't carry in if we wanted to post any buildings like DSS or anything like that. But that guidance is there, and like I say, I've not gotten a definitive word yet from the current sheriff as far as, you know, what he's found out, as far as, because our courthouse is here on the same campus. The parking lot separates us, and I don't think we'd be in violation of anything allowing that according to the statute.
And we don't feel like the parking lot is under that same statute. You should be able to lock up your devices in your car.
Before you go into the courthouse.
Into the courthouse only, yes. And you agree with that?
That's how it pretty much reads, too. Those were just the changes that I noted from the last meeting that we clarified or took care of. So if you all have anything else, or if the board has anything else, they see that needs more clarification or changes or...
I have questions, if we're ready. Very, Mr. Chairman. The, on page 11, under disciplinary authority, parts out that first sentence, says, "Elected officials or department heads that are appointed by the County Commissioners have the discretion to suspend or dismiss employees." However it's advisable, they consult, and blah, blah, blah. I'd like to understand what the implementation of that sentence means. I understand if a Commissioners have at-will employees that work directly for them, they would certainly have that authority. I'm not comfortable with Commissioners dismissing any other employees. And so I'd like to understand what exactly that means.
I think the way that reads, elected officials are, this is page 10 right here, under disciplinary authority on the IT policy. "Elected officials or department heads that are appointed by the Commissioners have discretion to suspend or dismiss employees." It's stating employees in their department. So for example, in the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff would never come and ask if he could take care of a situation in his department. He would be allowed to do that. He's elected. Same thing, the Register of Deeds can sort of make their own kind of determinations on things. And the only other offices that would really, it wouldn't be that the Commissioners per se would be involved in that part. That would just be given those elected officials or department heads that are appointed by the County Commissioners discretion to do those things. Whereas some of the departments, like if it's not an appointed position or not an elected official, would come and receive guidance from HR or the County Manager's Office before they did a disciplinary action to an employee.
I'm fine with that, but Commissioners don't need to be involved in any of that.
And I don't think that's what, I'm not reading it that way, so if I'm looking at it wrong, I'm reading it like that are appointed by the County Commissioners have the discretion to suspend or dismiss employees. Not that the Commissioners will be involved in it, just it gives that employee the right as an elected official or an appointed position.
It says, "Elected officials or department heads have the discretion to suspend or dismiss employees." That's true, because we have employees that work directly for us at will, and then every other employee works for the County Manager.
Right.
I just want to make it clear that we stay out of the County Manager's business and make sure it's interpreted that way.
Right.
Do you want it to state that the Commissioners only have something, only have the authority over appointed positions?
Well, it says here, it's really dealing with, "Elected officials or department heads that are appointed by the County Commissioners have the discretion to suspend or dismiss employees." So you're speaking of employees under that elected official or under that department head. Then where it says, "It's advisable they consult with HR on disciplinary actions," all other department heads are required to consult with HR, and then she would come to the County Manager if it needed me to go further than that. And if something needs to be added to clarify more, but I didn't, I wasn't reading it the way of like that it would be like a Commissioner decision about the employees in that department.
Well, this has been an issue in the past that I'm not happy with the results of. And so that's why I want to really clarify that Commissioners hire County Managers to handle employees, and we do not get involved in disciplinary decisions about them. That's what I would like, to make sure it says that.
Right, okay.
In a way that won't be interpreted, misinterpreted when the next board comes in.
And we can add something to say that the Board of County Commissioners are not involved in this other than positions appointed by them.
Yeah.
Just add a line and say that exact thing.
That'd probably satisfy it, I think.
That way it just says it in black and white instead of that. If we just add that under the disciplinary authority. Okay. And you could say something like, "Under no circumstance would the Board of County Commissioners be involved in disciplinary action other than employees appointed by them." There you go. Does that sound okay to you, Tom?
Okay, great.
Let's, we'll add that.
Okay, my next question's on page 23, under audits.
Okay.
And this is another clarification along the same lines. In that last sentence on page 23, in that revised one, in the revised version that you sent, it says, it's talking about audits, and it says deficiencies of a significant nature will be reported directly to the Stokes County Board of County Commissioners. And then, and then down in one other place, I forget where it was at. It also says some kind of deficiency, I think. It may have just been one of them. But I don't understand why that's not to the County Manager instead of the Commissioners.
It's under audits.
Mm-hmm, on page 23.
Yeah, the new one, on page 23.
23.
On the revised one.
And this is the one that we're taking from IT, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, the way it reads, it looks to me like it just go around the County Commissioners and report deficiencies directly to the Stokes County Board of Commissioners.
Is this part of this IT that's already approved?
It's already been approved.
We'll conduct audits at least once per year. Random audits will be deemed necessary, unannounced audits performed.
To the last sentence, just go to the last sentence.
Difficult to have a significant nature, will be reported directly to the State Department of Commissioners. Yeah, and that's the one that was approved in '03, this IT. It's this document, this Technology Acceptable Use Policy from 2003. So that was, that's why we put that in here, because it was already approved. But we could change, we could change that to...
Wouldn't it be the County Manager to start with?
It's not what it's, it's not what the document currently says that's approved in 2003. Because we added the IT Technology Acceptable Use Policy and the social media one directly from the one that's been approved. That was the adopted version that hadn't, has never been amended.
What kind of IT audit are we talking about?
Like, they do... Like, they do random things like to make sure that we're secure, things like that. So if they had a deficiency, they were saying at that time they would report that. If they came up and they did a sort of what they call a phishing kind of thing to kind of see deficiencies. Our companies do that, our IT departments do that with employees. And they're saying do like an annual report to do deficiencies. But I don't really know why that was worded like that in the beginning to come directly here. It looks like it would come through the county manager's office.
You can change it then to that.
Yeah, we can change it. Yeah, we can respond.
Yeah.
To the county manager.
Then I just have one other area. And it's on page 25.
Okay.
And if you go to the 1, 2, 3. Fourth paragraph up, it says Stokes County employees are allowed to have a personal social network site, subject to the rules and conditions set forth in this policy. It seems to me the county really doesn't have anything to say about whether somebody has a personal social network site or not. This was all approved at the same time.
Again, that one, and that part, the social media section, it was added July 28th, 2014. So that's the policy that's been approved, too.
Okay.
I mean, that's what, we can change, anything that you all want to change. It's just a...
So then it goes through the next three or four paragraphs, basically, you know, telling, trying to, I guess, tell employees what they can or can't say on their own personal social media accounts. And if you do something inappropriate, I'm summarizing this, if you put something on there inappropriate, then you can be terminated and beat up and disciplined and kicked out the door or whatever. The, my problem with that is, is the interpretation of what is appropriate and what's not. And so, I mean, I'd like for the Board to think about how we're going to determine that. I mean, and especially, and who's going to determine it? Whether it's commissioners determine it or whether it's the county manager that determines it? I mean, my definition of what's appropriate and what somebody else may think's appropriate is totally different and they both be legal. But I mean, so we're going to start, I don't understand how we're going to regulate people's judgment through this. And maybe this is a problem with all social media. I know some companies, private companies will just fire you if you, period, if you put anything on there. But I'm not comfortable with regulating what people are allowed to say or not say, especially if it's not something that's illegal, you know, under the law, basically. So, and I understand the need for this, I understand, I mean, you know, if an employee wants to get on there and bash me, I don't really care, to be honest with you. I mean, I think they ought to have a right to do that if they want to without any retribution from me or anybody else. So that's my dilemma with it and I really don't have the answer of exactly how you word this to make it, to figure out how we're going to implement the policy without it being unfair to employees. And also, you know, getting into their First Amendment rights as far as that goes too, which is the second phase of it.
Well, and really, this, and I'll refer to Ty on that because what we're talking about here is what's in the current technology policy approved in 2014.
Yeah, I agree.
It's what's, you know, here now, which is why we put it in just because it was already approved.
It's just my fault because I was county manager then, right? But I didn't do good work on this, I don't think, so.
That we would look at one employee aggressively attacking another employee here.
I mean, that's what it's basically geared for is to prevent bullying and creating a hostile work environment while you're at home on your social media page. I mean, everybody's entitled to their own political beliefs and opinions on everything else and you're allowed to share that on your social media page. By no means do we want to interfere with anybody's First Amendment rights. But we do maybe need to look at the wording on here to be more in compliance with what we've got in our rules and regulations as far as how you act and the way you treat people.
You're a fair game.
Who?
You're elected, so you're a fair game.
We got that right.
As far as me going on Facebook or anything and just really talking about Jamie in a manner that it just really breaks her down, then I don't think something like this should happen.
I know, it's a subjective area, it's not objective. And so that, I think whenever we were working on this before, it seemed like it was in the communications of 911 guys, somebody posted something that they were unhappy about something or whatever and we got into a big discussion. And I'm not sure we've really figured it out then either what we did, but might ask Dale if he remembers, might help you figure out how to deal with this, but...
So we just need to look at the wording on that and...
But I think the word inappropriate could be determined many different ways by many different people.
Oh, yeah, that's the problem. That's why...
What you might think's appropriate, I may not think's appropriate. So you get into this battle back and forth.
So then who decides, you know?
Saying that's a law-abiding word there, you know, employee.
We need Ty to look at it again.
He's already, I mean, he's looked at it. He gave his okay on it because he already okayed it once, so.
Okay.
Okay, so, given that's true, and I agree with what you just said, who's going to interpret it? Can we put that in there? Who's going to make the decision or...
Well, it's the department head who's trying to force it, human resources.
Maybe so, yeah.
And of course, any decision of the department head, any disciplinary action of the department head, that's subject to people.
Mm-hmm.
So does the league, that department head is subject to the league. Someone else?
And I guess the only other thing I would say is hopefully it's not one strike, you're out. If you make one misjudgment and say something that's over the line a little bit, that doesn't seem to me to be something that you go around dismissing people for, so. I don't know if you can include that in there.
There are some things that are clearly not permitted, like threatening, threatening language, things like that, threatening harm, something like that. There's a lot of regular...
Yeah.
Just because one employee wants to make a statement, it's pretty hard for the county.
Do you think that the best people would be county manager and department heads to do, handle all of this, basically? Maybe you could put that in, if everybody else is good with that.
Yeah. I think what Jamie was saying is right. Like, it's what you need to be concerned about is an employee in a department putting something really negative, could even be a lie about another employee in that same department and causing, you know, that's their own social media and their own time at home at night, but what does that do to create a hostile work environment, you know? So that type of thing would have to be addressed and there should be something that speaks to that, you know?
And I feel like that does.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's covered. That's just an example. That makes sense.
The department head and county manager will handle it. Is that what you all agree to?
That's fine.
Otherwise, I think it's a wonderful document.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, even if that right there, even if department head and county manager named disagree with like something goes on Facebook, it can always come to the Board of Commissioners for opinion correct.
Right.
Okay.
So what do I got to blow up, sir? Go back to the gun.
Yeah, we got to hit that.
I know the courthouse, you can't carry one in the courthouse. But, you know, me personally, I'm not a, well, I guess I am an employee, I'm roundabout way, but anyway, if I wasn't, I got my concealed carry permit and I walk in this building with it.
Right now, you can.
Yeah, right now you can. So me personally, I don't see anything wrong with the employee being able to do that because here's the thing about it, some guys carry their guns all the time. Say he gets called over here by Jake, needs to come see Jake, we got his gun on, he thinks nothing about it, could walk to the building. All right, now we're going to fire him because he's got a gun on him. Nah, I don't agree with that. He went to the same school I went to to get his gun permit. And if he's a good employee, you ain't got to worry about it with a gun anyway. But hands down, we've seen it enough. If a man wants to get somebody, it ain't got nothing to do with no permit or no sign. They coming at you, bottom line.
That's right. I like the Rockingham policy. I thought it was good.
That was good.
I would just adopt the Rockingham as is, too.
Yeah. The section on the concealed carry firearm, that last page.
Yeah.
It pretty much laid it out pretty easy to read. And I think, you know, most buildings are okay as far as like the courthouse is restricted. I'm going to, there may be some buildings like DSS that want to restrict it and put a sign on because that's an area they may not want that allowed. And I don't know if the Board would have any issue with that, you know, if they posted the DSS building. So that would be, that may even be a state DSS question to ask.
I worked over there and I had my concealed carry. I would want to be able to carry it.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. That would be something I'd have to get Stacy to check and just be sure that, how she feels and how the state feels about it as far as from their standpoint.
More how the state feels, really, than...
Yeah.
Or what the state law says.
Because otherwise, we would pretty much not restrict it in the buildings unless it's the courthouse.
Right.
Okay. Okay. I think that pretty well clears everything off, right?
And everyone got to see the remote working policy and it looks good.
Good, yeah.
Any more comments on that? Thank you, yes.
All right, thank you.
So do you want to move this to action tonight or do you want to move it to action for the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, just make those few changes. Yeah, it should be.
Change the final draft.
I'd say there could be something.
Yeah.
Or that we've still missed that we want to add.
Yeah. Depends how many times you can read something and find something new each time.
I'm not going to read anymore.
I'm kind of over it, too, I know.
We'll move on to item B, the Board of Adjustment appointments, Ms. Shaver.
Okay. Get back on my right screen. So I got a request from Planning Director David Sudders to replace some Board of Adjustments. There's three on here that are being reappointed that have agreed to serve and those are Marvin, Kavanaugh, Stephen Jessup, and Amos Elvis. The Board is a five-member Board and there's a member that's asking not to be reappointed, which is Carl Hill. So he's going to have some vacancies for that and he's got one member that does not need to be reappointed. So he's going to have the four-member Board out of five. So we've posted the vacancy online, so we just need reappointment for Marvin Kavanaugh, Stephen Jessup, and Amos Elvis. And we'll do the normal procedure where you can have those nominated at this meeting and then I'll place those out there for advertisement and then we can approve them at the next meeting.
Can we also nominate one for that vacancy?
If you've got anybody in mind and, yeah.
I got one.
Yeah, okay, yeah, great.
I could nominate John Turpin to fill that. He would like to be on that Board.
Okay. And then, do you want to go ahead and just like open the floor?
Yeah, I'll open the floor for any...
So you can get all those other ones to...
Any nominations?
And then I've got John.
Okay.
Any further nominations?
I have an address of Elvis.
All right.
Any more nominations?
I don't.
We have to close it as well.
Yeah, just motion to close.
Motion to close it.
Motion to close nominations.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we can move that to action for the next meeting and I'll advertise those in I F dot other, so.
Okay. All right, we'll move it to item C, the proclamation.
I think that's me again. I received a request from the state for this proclamation for the behalf of North Carolina, for North Carolina 811. I think it's proclamation, but I think it's their way as a reminder, as you get into nicer weather, people to be reminded to please call the 811 number for like digging any utility lines up and hurt themselves or somebody else or just cut the lines. And it's a pretty straightforward proclamation, just, you know, telling about that service and how it works. So they're just asking if you could approve that for them by April 1st. So if you're in agreement on that, we could just move it to action for the next meeting and I can send them the copy once you go through it.
All right. Any comments on this?
Good with it?
Yeah, I'm good. So action, next meeting?
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to the action agenda, item B, the investment incentive. Mr. Oakley?
Chairman, this is a resolution that we have put before the Board in the previous meeting. The Board directed the clerk to move forward with the public hearing and putting this in in front of the public hearing in the next Board meeting we'd have, which would have been today. But after receiving information from the City of King's attorney that some of the final details need to be worked out in the contract, the public hearing needed to have been postponed. And in speaking with Mr. Browder, the resolution can be approved at this meeting and we move on for that with that. But as soon as we hear something back from the City of King on the agreement and we work out the particulars on that, then we will have this hearing and then you can do your public hearing from that. But we want to make sure that the public hearing is based on what the two Boards have agreed on and approved. With that said, you know, we can move forward with the resolution and then we will hold off until the agreement is finalized.
I made a motion, we approved the Senate resolution.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
One question right quick, Ms. Chairman. So we approved that resolution, then we do the public hearing, but then we got to approve the agreement and everything separately, right?
Right. Because the resolution will become part of the agreement. You're going to see come before you. The City of King's already approved theirs.
Okay.
We'll have to send this to their city attorney to include as an attachment exhibit in that agreement and then the public hearing and then you'll have, you know, look over the agreement, make sure you agree to all the terms before it. So nothing's finalized in this resolution. It's just making a sort of a thing saying you're in favor of doing it, you go forward with looking at the agreement. But it's not finalized until the public hearing's held and all that. And once we get an idea of when that agreement will be ready, then we can set the public hearing. But I've got to give 10 days notice for that, so.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Shannon, would you mind taking some to close session?
To consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any officer position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners or any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6.
Can we close?
Close. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
You said you sent me your notes today. Through the agenda thing or, I mean, I don't...
Um, I mean, I don't.